This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's First Selectman, joined by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, are there any public comments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, I have one. I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 7 of our agenda, which is resignations and appointments, by adding the following: the appointment of Rodrick Ryan Williams, 20 Lancelot Drive, to the Regional Planning Agency of South Central Connecticut to fill the unexpired term of Teresa Ranciatavelli, expiring, wait a minute, December 31st, 2024? That happened already. No, no, we're in 2024 now. Excuse me, I'm still getting used to the year. Yes, that is accurate, expiring December 31st, 2024. So for the next year.
All right, that's a motion.
Yeah. I'll second Sally's motion, and shall I do the same thing?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm still on 2023 as well.
Exactly.
All right, I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from the January 4th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those meetings minutes.
I'll second the approval of those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop Meeting, which was held on January 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to direct your attention to these screens here. Just a brief overview, some of the things I've been involved with from an economic development standpoint. Then I'd like to recap some upcoming important dates as it relates to our budget referendum. So let's take a look at economic development and some of the most recent projects that I've been involved with. This is not one of them, we brought this in a couple of years ago, so, but. The reason it's here is it's been a resounding success even with the new Home Goods store. So when we announced Home Goods coming in, there was a mindset among certain people that one of these two stores were going to close. The reality of the situation is both enjoy competing with each other and against each other because they carry a different product SKU line. SKU, for those that don't know, is an acronym for stock keeping units. Those are the individual products in a given store. So this is still going well, as is Home Goods. The new news this week is after a long time coming, primarily due to banks not financing new hotels. The groundbreaking is going to happen. I spoke to the owners this week, the Hampton Inn Hotel on Universal Drive. We will be doing a groundbreaking ceremony in the third week of February. From that point forward, there's been a lot of prep work already done there. We're estimating 14 months for that project to be completed from the time that we break around on the third week of January. That, ladies and gentlemen, will complete the three-pad development project that is in front of Cinemark, that was designed years ago to accommodate three businesses. Those businesses currently, as you know, are Chick-fil-A, Panera Bread, and now the Hampton Inn Hotel. 575 Washington Avenue, long a problem here after the produce store left. The produce store left because they leased that building at 575. And there were no critical improvements needed in that building that were done, which forced the produce store to go to Wofford. That's a simple version of a long story. So finally, after probably about eight years now, we found an interested party. It's an upscale limousine company. If you drive by there, you'll see the front of the building is retrofitted. The inside of the building is retrofitted. Our building officials and our fire marshals are there, working with the contractor. And the name of the company will be Elite Limousine. This is a company that provides these types of transportation services for corporate executives going to airports, picking them up at airports. We have many situations here where we have executives come in from other states, from Medtronics, people from other states coming in from Amazon, and this, I think, will fit nicely there. And when we started to talk to them about this, I was reminded of my own corporate career. I'd fly to DC, I'd fly to San Francisco, all these different places. And I graduated from taking taxi cabs to these type of services. And it's remarkable, as an executive, to have to travel in something like this where you could relax, get work done in these type of vehicles, and that's what we're looking for here. Quite frankly, this was the only company that wanted to go there because this is a building that requires anybody leasing it to do all of the fit-outs and improvements at their expense, and they're leasing it. So we're thankful that they're coming, and they should be opening up, I'd say, in the next 45 days. Moro Motors and the BMW dealership. We've talked months ago about a 15,000-square-foot building that was built for a Sprint van service, and that section of that driveway is redesigned to have a pre-owned certified BMW and Mercedes number of cars. This is an additional 7,000 square feet on top of that. So this is moving forward, and we're looking forward to that. For those watching on TV, we have some background noise here. There's a car whose horn is beeping, so we'll just have to play it out, and hopefully it's not too much of a distraction. Mr. Tom White is going to do some reconnaissance for us here, so bear with us, ladies and gentlemen.
It's probably one of our cars. I have an old car, so I wouldn't be surprised if it's mine acting up.
See, folks watching on TV, this is a true spirit of collaboration here. We have some town residents who are at this meeting and who are looking to see where this problem is to help us find and solve this problem. So again, bear with us.
You said you had an old car? I have a new car, and I wouldn't be surprised if it was mine.
I have a 2007 Pontiac.
Wow.
And folks watching, now that we're taking a little bit of unlevering here, and it doesn't have air conditioning in it, right, Bill?
And it doesn't usually have heat either. But the windows go up and down, so it does get air-conditioned in the summer.
They're coming back up the steps, folks watching on TV will see whose car it is.
This is live. This is live action. We're like the news team. Bill, you want to do the sports?
We have found the car. Thank you, Mr. White, thank you, and it'll shortly be remediated. Right, Mike? We use that word.
Where are we? Are we at Jersey Mike's?
Yes.
All right, so back to town business here, folks, on the economic development side. So this is the plaza that has Starbucks, Five Guys, and Haven Hot Chicken. So the owner of the plaza, and I have been trying to get Ben &amp; Jerry's ice cream here, and I reported that at a previous meeting, but unfortunately, that deal did not happen. So we're happy to announce that Jersey Mike's, who's had such success in the southern part of town on Universal Drive, there's a new franchisee that wants to put a Jersey Mike's on the central to northern part of town. So Jersey Mike's has signed a lease, and that'll complete the four-tenant building there. Five Guys, Starbucks, Haven Hot Chicken, and now Jersey Mike's. So that is coming, folks. Over in the North Haven Shopping Center, next to Agency on Aging, there's about 6,781 square feet, roughly. And it's a location that has space on the bottom with a mezzanine on the top. So essentially, it could be two floors. So one of the local newspapers reported that Portofino's was going there. That's incorrect, ladies and gentlemen. The reality of this situation is the owner of Portofino's and I are working on this to get this restaurant in this plaza. This has now happened, the lease is signed, and this restaurant will go in there. It will be owned by the owner of Portofino's, but it will not be Portofino's. We're working on trying to determine what type of concept would go best here in North Haven, something new, unique, and different that maybe we don't have. The name has not been identified yet. He and I are working on a couple of names, but this is definitely going to happen, finally. Over at the North Haven Fairgrounds, I put this here to tell everyone because I get a lot of social media messages. Trader Joe's has declined coming to North Haven. Trader Joe's, we had them interested in the North Haven Fairgrounds. And the Trader Joe's local real estate people liked that fairground site. Thought it was like one of the best sites right off the highway. The Fairgrounds was very gracious in working with me to add more footage beyond the parking lot there. Most people don't realize it's a site that there's two owners. The Fairgrounds owns the parking lot, and then there's a commercial real estate development company that owns the old Donatos. The reason that the old Donatos is still standing is to grandfather it in as a restaurant under the zoning laws going back in the past. If that was to be torn down, they would lose the right to potentially put another restaurant there. So it was kept in place to examine what the possibilities would be for a possible restaurant. When Trader Joe's was thinking about going there, then we were looking at tearing that building down with the developer doing it, but they pulled out. So now we're back to square one. We've got interested parties there. Chipotle, Wendy's, and some others. We don't know what's going to happen there, folks, but I put this on here to tell everybody that, much like my baseball career, you know, every 10 at-bats, I've said it before, just put an article in one of the magazines, in economic development, you tend to make seven outs out of every 10 at-bats, and this was one of them. Over north of this, on Washington Avenue, you might recall, you might know that there was a gas station that has been now taken over by Big Y. Big Y is taking it over and putting a Big Y Express there, which is going to be diagonally across from the Big Y supermarket. Now, in my business career, Big Y was one of hundreds of customers of ours. And in western Massachusetts, the Big Y Express was an adjunct of the store. It was a gas station component with a little food store there and a convenience store. So now they're starting to move in Connecticut and expand with these type of concepts and formats. So this is what we're going to see there. If you drive by there, you'll see the gas station, La Fresca, it went by the name. It's empty now. Big Y has purchased it, and will be putting this Big Y Express there. This is finally accomplished. You may have heard me said in the past that we have a lot of interest here in North Haven. I meet with and deal with a lot of these contractors, electrical contractors, plumbing contractors, HVAC contractors, who are looking for space in North Haven. This is a company that came to us from another municipality. It's the RA Levine Company. This company's been in business 53 years old. Valerie and I grew up in West Haven. This company was part of the fabric of that community. So this is commercial refrigeration installation maintenance and parts over on Dodge Avenue in the back of the existing buildings. That's where this is located. Over at 336 State Street, this is a small new business that's come in. We're trying to populate some of the vacancies in existing buildings. This is called Auto Motivated, and it's basically an automobile enhancement facility to do things like high-end paint jobs, pup caps, whatever the ostentatious company parts are to automobiles, this company helps provide that. You know, in plazas all across Connecticut, we've seen retailers go out, particularly during COVID. So just south of Stop &amp; Shop, we were able to, I'm going there tomorrow to see the owner. I saw the owner this past weekend. Just tumble went in there, this 11,000-square-feet. You know, many times people will say, hey, Mr. Frieda, hey, Mike, we need things for our children, some places that the children can go. Well, this is one of those places. It's a just tumble, tumbling facility. I was there, like I said, last weekend. We're actually doing a ribbon cutting this weekend there. So it's a very nice facility, and I saw a lot of parents there with young children, children from ages five to about 17. And it was really nice to see how well they're doing so far. So that's 11,000-square-feet of empty space that finally we got rolling. This finally went in. Mentioned this a few months ago, 27 Dodge Avenue, Northeast Sign Company. And this is another example of company coming in from another community, filling in 10,000-square-feet. Coming soon at 323 Washington Avenue, this is next to the existing Dino's. You'll see in the signs there already, Grace's Candy &amp; Company. Now, this is not a net gain of one. This is replacing what was once Sylvia's Bakery, who unfortunately didn't make it here in North Haven. And we're sorry about that, but this company here, this new little business, we think is going to be a good one. That takes care of economic development. Now I want to get into something equally important. Just reviewing Sally and Bill with the public, with our audience here, some very important dates. So the budget preparation for fiscal year 2025 is underway. And I'm not happy with what we see, to be perfectly honest with you. I'm not happy because it's nothing that we can control right now. Health insurance has gone up 35%. Debt payments have gone up because of the police department and the middle school. Pension payments have gone up. We can't kick that can down the road. And the requests from all the department heads have come in. And us, as the Board of Selectmen, have sent a letter to the Board of Finance with a tax increase no more than $1,000,000. Currently, we're way above that. So what we're doing is we're going to bring this to the public through the workshop sessions and then at the public meetings. And we want to make sure, this board, myself, that we want the public to come out and tell us how they feel. So here's some of the dates. This Saturday, February 3rd, here at 8:30, we have the IT Department, which is very important to our town, but also the Board of Ed, which is very, very important to our town. So we'll see two presentations as the Board of Finance. I've already seen what the Board of Ed is looking for. The Board of Finance will see it on Saturday. And they're in a position, unfortunately, where there's a couple of things happening. There's unfunded mandates that are very controversial across the state. There's a statewide push to change the reading program, which could add hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to a school budget. And I've often talked here about the volatility of special education. And it's tremendously volatile this year with new students that we have to accommodate. And the Board of Finance is going to see anywhere from $500,000 to $550,000 in special ed volatility that they have to budget for for this coming fiscal year. But that's going to be unveiled on Saturday. Very important dates, the Board of Finance, 6:30 regular meeting. Val, the actual date on that, and I'll see that there, but...
Oh, my apologies.
You got there, Bill?
February 21st.
February 21st, ladies and gentlemen. 6:30 here, that's going to be a very important Board of Finance meeting because as you see here, four departments are coming to us. Registars, assessor, town clerk, and the police department. So hopefully, you'll either be here to listen, or you can watch on NHTV or Facebook. Other very important dates, budget public hearing, Tuesday, April 9th, at the North Haven High School. That's at 7 o'clock, where the superintendent and I present both the town budget and the Board of Ed budget.
And Mike, maybe to note, you know, I'm using my town calendar. On the town calendar, that meeting that used to be on Tuesday, April 2nd, we now moved it to April 9th.
Good, very good point, yes.
Right, the auditorium was unavailable to us at the high school.
So, you know, the calendar's wrong, but April 9th is right, as Sally said.
April 9th, very good. Then, on May 13th, on a Monday night, at 7:00 PM, back at the North Haven High School. And that then is the second meeting, another very important meeting. Board of Finance, in the April Board of Finance, will be also reviewing everything, and then we go to this May 13th meeting. And then we have the referendum on Tuesday, May 21st, that will be from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And that's also incorrect in the calendar because we changed that and pushed it by a week.
Yeah, we had to do that to comply with the charter dates, the charter, I think, so...
Well, I request...
That's right, you requested that.
I didn't like the referendum the next day.
That was a good point.
After the budget town meeting has to be the second Monday of the month. And originally, we had the referendum the next day, which I didn't think, and you fully agreed, and the Board of Finance as well, that one day just doesn't give the public enough time to learn about the budget, perhaps read articles in the paper about it, so we moved it. But, you know, you're making this presentation, and I thank you first for doing that because we really do want public participation in this very challenging budget year. And to me, I mean, they're all important, but the public hearing on the 9th is really the best opportunity for the public to have an impact because then, about a week later, mid-the-third Wednesday of April, the Board of Finance meets again, and as you know, very often tweaks the budget one last time before we, the Board of Selectmen, call the budget town meeting. There's not, I've never seen the budget change between the budget town meeting and the referendum. They're only eight days apart. However, I have seen, and we have all seen, the budget change significantly from the date of the public hearing, April 9th, to that meeting in mid-April by the Board of Finance. So if you're a little overwhelmed by all these dates and you have to pick one, to me, they're all important, but the budget, the public hearing is the opportunity to really have an impact. At least, that's the theory, if you read our town charter. That's the theory of the timing of all of this for the Board of Finance to act or react to what they hear at the public hearing. So I commend you for taking the time. We've both written about this in publications in recent days, and it's good to have it reaffirmed here, so I thank you for that.
And that's April, yes, that gives you eight days, like April 9th, and then the Board of Finance, just to... Fortunately, I have the calendar.
Yeah, they're meeting the 17th.
17th.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing, too, is I think the dates that were changed will be on the calendar on the town's website, too.
They're already on there, yes.
Yeah, they're already on there, as opposed to, you know, changing slightly in May for the meetings in May.
And the First Selectman told you about workshops coming in the days and weeks ahead, but there have already been some important workshops, including Public Works and the Fire Department, Library, Recreation, and you could, if you were unable to watch them, you could go to the NHTV website, and I'm sure they're there, and you can click on to whatever interests you so that you could ask relevant and informed questions at the public hearing.
Excellent point also.
Yeah.
So ladies and gentlemen, before we move on, if we average, let's say, 6%, 7%, 8% turnout on a referendum, consider that for a moment. That's our form of government, referendum, and we can make an argument that it's a more effective form than maybe having a town council, seven, eight, or seven, nine people, seven to nine people, voting on a budget on behalf of everybody. In this form of government, to use a corporate analogy, in my other career, I would present to the Board of Directors. In this career, I present directly to the shareholders. And the shareholders are the residents of North Haven. You're the shareholders of this corporation. But when only 6% to 8% of the shareholders turn out, that means a decision's being made for the other 92% of the people who don't turn out. So our point is, and what we're trying to accomplish here, is just make sure everyone's aware and ask everyone to turn out and ask everyone to vote. So what we showed you here is economic development projects I'm working on, but equally important is what the process looks like in terms of unfolding. And to Sally's point, if you missed some workshop sessions, they're all catalogued on North Haven TV. Thank you. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Bill and Sally.
We are. Sir, item six. Yes, we are to have a discussion of the possibility of adopting an ordinance to provide a tax abatement for real property taxes for the surviving spouse or spouses of police officers and firefighters who died while in the line of duty. This is something we discussed last month.
So let me frame this for those watching that weren't watching last meeting.
Right.
We're moving forward with trying to create an ordinance that involves having a surviving spouse or surviving spouse of a police officer or firefighter passing in the line of duty. There's a state statute that grants the municipality the right, or the option, to waive property taxes for the surviving spouse of a police officer or firefighter who passed in the line of duty. Last month, we had a good discussion. Sally and Bill had a lot of good feedback. Our town attorney here is tonight, Jeffrey Danarfio. He reviewed all of the feedback, and it's in here. He put it into a red-line document, and tonight's discussion is to review that. We're not going to be calling a town meeting tonight or warning a town meeting. We feel that there's more discussion that we need to have. Once we conclude that it's the language that we would like, then we, Valerie and I, will call and warn for the town meeting. So with that being said, we have our attorney here, Jeff Danarfio. And maybe, Jeff, if you don't mind, maybe we could ask you to come up and kind of review the product that you put together for us tonight.
Good evening. As you indicated, Mr. First Selectman, there's a statute that's been around in Connecticut since 2000. It's a one-sentence statute that allows the legislative body, which in North Haven, of course, is the town meeting, to establish by ordinance a program to abate real property taxes or any portion of real property taxes with respect to primary residents occupied by the surviving spouse of a police officer, a firefighter, or an EMT who dies while on the performance of the officers or firefighters or technicians' duties. I had prepared for discussion purposes, I hadn't realized that it was going to actually be talked about in a Board of Selectmen meeting because I really didn't have any input before I drafted it, but I had prepared something for discussion purposes and received the comments at a meeting last week and generated a revised, red-lined, and clean version of the ordinance based on the comments, and am happy to answer any questions or make whatever additional edits the Board would like to see before warning a town meeting.
Yes, thank you. I have four issues. May I proceed? First... First, you know, the, my first issue is in Section B, which is on the bottom of the first page. I thought I had discussed this at the January meeting. You know, the ordinance title is, uses the term "in the line of duty" in, in the title of the ordinance, and in Section A definitions, "line of duty" is defined, but in Section B, it just says, you know, that with, there would be the 100% abatement for real property taxes owned by the surviving spouse of a firefighter or police officer who has died on duty. I just think that it should stay consistent with not only the title, but specifically with the definition of line of duty, and it should say there, "who has died in the line of duty." Because it would be consistent, and there, someone could have a different definition for duty versus in the line of duty. So that is the first change I would like. And also, in the definition, going back to the Section A in definitions, in the line of duty definition itself, it says that line of duty does not include deaths that could just have likely occurred while not on duty. I think we need something in there, or something somewhere here, that a licensed medical professional must make that determination. So that, I'll just make my four comments, and then you guys. So that's number two. And then, again, in definitions, where surviving spouse is defined, as a person who was a resident of the town of North Haven and married, I think it should just say legally married. I feel more comfortable with the word legally there. And fourth, and finally, again, referencing the definition of surviving spouse, it says that the surviving spouse is, you know, a resident of North Haven, hopefully legally married, to the police officer or firefighter at the time of the police officer or firefighter's death. I think somewhere in here, whether it's in the definition of firefighter, or in the definition of police officer, that we state that the officer or firefighter must also be a resident of North Haven at the time of his or her death. Sometimes spouses don't live together. We know that. And so, those are my four comments. Very happy that the definition of firefighter includes volunteer. That was one of my big issues last time. The original drafts overlooked the volunteers. So those are my four comments. Bill, how about you?
Yeah, the, yeah, I think I'm okay with the first one regarding, you know, making it consistent in Section B.
Putting, putting it in line of duty, okay.
Line of duty. You know, the, you know, having been in the military, and actually having to make line of duty determinations, or actually, you know, having a process to do that, may, you know, I'm not sure a medical professional is always an appropriate person to make a line of duty determination.
It's not, they're not making that determination, they're making the determination that it does not include deaths that could just have likely occurred while not on duty.
Okay, so you're saying the medical profession would only do that?
Yes.
Unless it's a chain of command making a line of duty determination.
Oh, no, 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 no. We are exempting from, by virtue of the definition in Section A of line of duty, first it defines it, which is pretty clear. It's a death that occurs while the firefighter or police officer is performing an action solely related to the performance of their regular work, or as a part of it. So that defines it, but then there's an exception. It says it does not include deaths that could just have likely occurred while not on duty. Well, to me, that is a medical determination, Counselor.
So I misunderstood, so that's where you're, that's where you're actually, you know, as opposed to...
Well, yeah, I'm making two, I'm making two, two of my four items concern line of duty. The first one, you seem to be okay with.
Right.
I mean, if you're going to define line of duty, when you use that phrase in B, it should be consistent with the definition. So just, I'm just adding "in the line of duty," which is defined above. But as far as a death, a death could have likely occurred otherwise, to me, that is clearly a medical determination, based on specific medical facts and circumstances. And so, putting that in there without some sort of refinement, that it, that would be determined by a medic, a licensed medical professional, or a doctor, I think is important.
But falling off of a ladder, or, you know, dying in a car chase or accident in a building collapse would not require a medical professional? Or being shot by a...
Of course not, no, no.
So it's really only a limited medical professional?
I'm talking about the exception that's in the definition itself. It defines line of duty, and then it has something that is not included as a line of duty death, and it is a death that could have just as likely occurred while not on duty, like a heart attack.
That would be the only case that we would need a medical professional.
Right.
Right.
Yes, for, to determine that exclusion.
Plenty of the residents would not require a medical professional.
Exactly. I mean...
Jeff, does that make any sense, or, you know, are you following that line of...
Well, I mean, there's two ways we could do it. One would be to take that out, which doesn't preclude you from saying that it wasn't a line of duty death. You know, I mean, I draft this for the town, I don't draft this for the person that is going to make the claim. I mean, I understand, I understand Sally's point, I don't have any problem requiring that a licensed medical professional make the determination of whether that exclusion applies.
Yeah, it's only the exclusion I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah.
That's fine, or we could just take it out. You know, if you take it out, it doesn't preclude you from making the determination, anyway.
Well, I, I, when I got the proposed ordinance at last month's meeting, I, I looked at quite a few other ones, and the one that we looked at pretty much followed the Groton ordinance, word for word, and others have similar language in there, most of them did. So I think it's important to have it.
Right.
It's a very limited exclusion, but it, by its very nature, it should be determined by a medical professional. It has nothing to do with what is in the line of duty, it has to do with other medical causes. So that's just something that jumped out at me when I first read it.
Like I said, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so Sally, give me how you would phrase that sentence then, please.
Well, as it reads, it does not include deaths that ju, that could just have likely occurred while not on duty, in the opinion of a licensed medical professional.
As determined, as determined.
Or as determined by a licensed medical professional.
Yep, I wrote that, yep.
Yeah.
So that way, you clearly have limited it just to that exception.
Exactly. It would be just one sentence. I think it's an important exclusion, it's in every proposed ordinance, or adopted ordinance that I've read from quite a few towns. Counselor, how about "in the line of duty" in Section B? Do you, do you agree it should be consistent with the definition in A?
I don't have any concern about it, but I also don't have any problem with the edit.
Okay. If you're going to define something one way, and then use it later, it should be consistent. Okay. And my fourth, and what about adding the word legally to married?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good with this, we're fine, yep.
And including, now, it looks like in the redline that you gave us, EMT was removed, but in the definition of line of duty, it's still there.
Still there, I circled it.
Oh, okay, I missed that one, all right.
Yeah. That's okay, I didn't know what year it was earlier in the meeting, so, you know, one to, one to one, we are. And what about specifically stating that the officer or firefighter must be a resident of the town?
That's fine.
Because otherwise, someone could, a spouse, a widowed, a widowered spouse could move here and say, if you read it, as it is, well, she'd have to be here. It only requires that the spouse be a resident of the town in these definitions. I just think it should also require the officer or firefighter to be a resident.
Yes, so you're saying a situation would be the spouse is, lives in North Haven as a primary residence, and the deceased firefighter or police officer does not live with the spouse, but lives in another town, is a resident of another town.
That happens.
Okay.
You know that, I know that, yeah. So that could be included in the definition.
And that's the whole, that was the original one, 10th, but thank you, thank you for picking that up, so, yep.
That's fine.
But of course, you know, we also changed our definition of firefighter and police officer, which you accurately included those changes. We're not just limiting it to North Haven firefighters or North Haven officers. The first and foremost requirement is that they're North Haven residents, so they could be employed by another municipality, and will be entitled to this, and I think that's...
Well, that's your policy decision.
That's a very good, I think that's very important for us to have in this ordinance.
It is, because that, that is why I'm bringing this forward to the public, because of that very reason.
Right.
So...
And they are town residents, and they're town taxpayers, and we should also emphasize that this is just real estate taxes, right, not motor vehicle or personal property.
That's right.
Yeah, it's all the statute provides.
And it's only real estate taxes on a primary residence, not on any other real estate that they may or may not own in the town.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where I think, you know, you put in state of Connecticut, in both locations, which is exactly what we think.
You and I, if you recall, last month, were both a little baffled by some of the wording in the definition of firefighter and, and police officer, so the changes that Council Incorporated have cleared that up well.
You know, I think in the, when we, when we looked at it last, last meeting, we, I think it didn't include already EMTs. From a legislative, I mean, from a standpoint of other towns, is that because other towns actually employ, I mean, EMTs, or...
Yeah, some towns do, sure.
So, you know, if we had EMTs that were not members of the Fire Department, we separately employed them else, you know, in a ambulance company or whatever, we could include them under, under that definition.
They're in the statute, yeah.
But we've taken them out in this case, because I think we're looking at a municipal employee, employed, you know, either fireman or policeman who lives, is employed in North Haven or elsewhere in Connecticut.
That's exactly right, though.
So I just wanted to explain the exclusion of, you know, for the, for the people listening in, maybe why we didn't include EMTs. You know, from a private EMT company versus...
Right.
Being a public, an employee of a public entity.
Exactly, yeah.
That's, that's the exact distinction, right there.
Yeah, which, which would also include even state police officers as well.
Yes, I think that's why we added...
Would it, um, let's see, now that I think about it, do we actually...
Yeah, we had, we had put in, in the definition of police officer, we added in the school resource officers, which are here, and for any valid police department, or, I think we didn't, we talk about, or police agency, to include state police.
Yeah, I think, I think we, maybe, you know, because we're really, you know, I think the way it is, I think we're still talking about municipal police departments.
Right.
As opposed to a state.
So we had added in state or, or state agent, or police state agency.
So you want that changed, too?
I think it seemed reasonable if we've included municipal place, and again, it may never ha, hopefully, it will never happen, but I don't think we should exclude...
So department or agency?
Yes.
Good.
You know, I hate to inadvertently exclude, you know, the widower, widower of a state, widower of a state police officer.
Bill, you had another thought, I think you wanted to bring forward.
You know, the, I looked at all the exceptions under Connecticut General Statute 12-81, this is 81X, so you can tell alphabetically that there's a lot of exceptions under this section of the statutes. Based on what's happened in the Middle East recently, within the last week or so, there were three Army Reservists, I believe from the South Carolina, they're in South Carolina, that were killed in the line of duty in Jordan, based on that drone attack. And we do have a lot of town members who serve, you know, in the National Guard and in the Army Reserve, and also elsewhere in the state. I mean, they would be town members in that case, or could actually be on active duty, and actually, as I was, in all my years on active duty, I was a resident of town in North Haven, and did own, you know, and have property here in North Haven. Would, I didn't see anything under the statutes that would include people in the military on active duty, active duty for training in the Guard or Reserve, or even on a drone weekend in active duty for training. We recently had a soldier who, I believe, was in the Army National Guard, was killed by a lightning strike on duty, I believe down in Georgia. So is there room, I don't see anything in the statute that would prohibit it, but I'm asking you, would it be possible to include, you know, military in this who serve, you know, our state and our country?
It would have to fall under one of the subsections of 12-81. The statute that created the municipal option to abate the real estate tax of a surviving spouse of a firefighter or police officer is 12-81X.
Right, as I was saying.
12-81 is the main exemption statute for all types of property tax exemptions in Connecticut. And under 12-81, there's probably six to eight exemptions that apply to veterans, so it would have to fall within one of those half dozen or so exemptions in order for it to be applicable, but...
I read, I read all of them.
Those exemptions, I don't believe, I don't believe those exemptions require ordinance.
It didn't cover, it didn't cover that circumstance. It covered a lot of other veterans or benefits for military, but not, not this one, so. So we, we need a legislative change to 12-81 to actually affect that on a town ordinance.
It would, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to get to.
The assessor doesn't have any jurisdiction on exemptions, other than what the statute provides.
That, that's exactly what I wanted, you know, even though maybe would be a good idea, especially based on those three Army Reservists who died in Jordan this past week.
Yeah, we don't, under the Municipal Powers Act, we don't have authority to grant tax exemptions beyond what the legislature says we can grant.
So, at least I asked, and thanks for clarifying that. But I think Sally would have even been in favor of something like that.
Yeah, but as Council says, 12-81X, which is the statute that authorizes us at our option to abate our own real estate taxes, it's just limited to police...
I read A through, I read 81A through, all the way to the end.
Yes, there, so, there are many other...
Yeah, it didn't cover, I didn't see it cover.
There are many other programs available to, to veterans, and we do have veterans exemption for our assessed, our assessed value.
But not one for, for military killed in the line of duty?
No, no, this is...
That would be similar to a fireman or a policeman.
Exactly, you'd have to advocate for a change in 12-81X.
All right, so thank you for that, Jeff. Now, I'm going to propose here, unless there's any other comments or additions, that we bring it back to Jeff, who'll do the edits, bring it back to this board next month.
Sure.
Now, do you, Bill, and do you, Sally, want Valerie and I to warn the town meeting, or do you think that it requires further discussion before we warn the town meeting? I think we've covered a lot of the topics here.
Doesn't the Board of Selectmen have to warn the town?
Yeah, we would warn it at the march meeting.
Yeah, it would be on the next agenda.
Right, be on the next agenda.
Oh, okay, I thought you two were...
No, no, to add it to the march agenda.
Is there a charter, a provision? Is there a charter, a provision? I don't know about.
I have new authority.
Oh, okay.
We could add it, and then if there's a discussion, we could postpone it.
Yeah.
But I think we're at the point where we have a product that we can bring to the public to answer their questions at an annual, at a town meeting, and then have a vote. The way we work is, the residents would vote on this.
Yeah, I think that with the changes that we've discussed and that the four items I mentioned, it seemed to have some agreement, we all can review the final proposed ordinance product next month and call all in one shot.
Okay.
Just for the, for the public, I think, you know, I think we mentioned a couple things that were included in Jeff's revision. But just to mention them again, I think it does properly include not only the regular firefighters, but also our volunteer firefighters. And then separately, I think under police, we've included the school resource officers or, you know, people in a similar position.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, so I think it, you know, just for, if people didn't listen to it last time, I think we brought both of those up and, you know, I think in revisions that Jeff's made, I think he's properly included them to reflect our circumstances here in North Haven.
All right. So, I think we're good. We're going to review it one more time, but we're going to warn the town meeting at the next meeting. So, that would mean, ladies and gentlemen, that at the March meeting, on the agenda, you'll see a warning of a town meeting, and we have to work with the dates, Valerie, right?
To figure out a date, yes, that works, everybody.
Okay, very good. All right, let's move to resignations and appointments.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, number seven is resignations and appointments. I'll start with making a motion to accept the resignation of Delilah Dominguez, 1298 Hartford Turnpike Apartment 10G, from the Commission on Aging, with a term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second that resignation.
All right. Delilah, thank you for your service. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
I'll motion to, for, to approve the resignation of Donna Levine, 23 LeGrand Road, from the Commission on Aging, term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right. In discussion, I'd like to thank you, Donna, and we've known each other for a long time. You've sat on this commission for a long time. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye. Next, I would like to make a motion for the appointment of Christine Umstead, 216 Quinnipiac Avenue, number 211, to the Commission on Aging, to fill the unexpired term of Delilah Dominguez, term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Kimberly Washington, 447 Washington Avenue, to the Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Richard LaPreste, term to expire December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right. Kim, if you're watching, you know, I've enjoyed meeting with you. Thank you for reaching out to me. Thanks for the meeting we had here. We're looking forward to having you on our Housing Authority. So, all those in favor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, before I say aye, I reviewed her very impressive resume. She has a long history of community involvement, and I look forward to meeting her. I have not met her, but I look forward to doing so, and so, thank you for letting me say that. So, you can call for the vote.
And Rich LaPreste, we know sometimes you watch us from Florida, so we thank you for your service and thank you for stopping in around the holidays to say hello to Valerie and I. So, all those in favor?
Aye. I spoke to Richard today.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Good.
And finally, we have the added appointment. I'll make a motion for the appointment of Rodrick Ryan Williams, 20 Lancelot Drive, to the Regional Planning Agency of South Central Connecticut, to fill the unexpired term of Teresa Ranciatavelli, expiring December 31st, 2024.
I'll second that appointment of Rodrick.
Okay, Rod, thanks for willing to be willing to do this. And it came from the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission overall. So, Rodrick, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bond releases.
Yeah, this is a little different.
Yes.
In my 10-plus years, I've never seen this.
So, Ms. Valerie's been on top of this, and she, I think, if you don't mind, Val, would you like to explain it?
Well, I think that attorney DeNobrio might be a better resource because he was involved in drafting a resolution for this. Thank you.
So, right now, there's a cash performance bond. The conditions of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't specify a cash or a surety bond. So, when I looked at the conditions of approval, my concern was that substituting the surety bond without having some formal record, I think in the past, surety bonds have been substituted for cash bonds without coming to the Board of Selectmen because they don't view it as a release. But because of the amount and because of the fact that the conditions of approval didn't specify cash or surety bond, my concern was that I didn't want a surety in the event that there's a performance bond claim made down the road to claim that the surety bond was never actually accepted by the town. So, I wanted some formal record that the surety bond was accepted and really the cash bond.
Do you think we should also have, as we normally do with bond releases, a recommendation from Planning and Zoning on this, or no?
No, because it's not a straight release. It's a surety, it's a surety bond for the same amount.
Well, we're next, the next resolution, we are releasing the cash performance bond because of the performance bond.
Yeah, it's an $850,000 surety bond from a T-list surety, so.
We're getting our guarantee in a different form for the, for the guarantee for the contractual performance.
Same amount, yeah, yeah.
And that's the key, as far as I'm concerned, for the town's interests, we're, as the abougi, that the principal performs contract.
That's it.
Or we, and the performance bond will give us recourse. This is not one of my areas of expertise, but I do believe that we will have recourse if they fail to complete, or even if they damage or harm the property.
Well, the, the performance bond ensures completion of the public improvements that are required by the conditions of the subdivision and site plan approvals.
Right.
So, the performance bond is conditioned upon the bond principal's successful completion of the work. If the bond principal doesn't complete the work, then we would make a claim against the performance bond to fund the cost of having somebody else come in and do the work. And the thing that we always worry about with a surety bond is the financial viability of the surety. That's why my first question was, you know, I need to see the bond because I need to find out if it's a T-list surety or not, because that makes all the difference.
And you feel confident in that?
Yeah, Capital's a T-list. I verified that January 24th, it's a T-list surety, so.
Okay.
U.S. government, T-list is the Treasury List of Acceptable Sureties on Federal Government Construction Projects.
It wouldn't be here if you hadn't done that, I'm sure.
Nope. Nope.
Okay.
Very good. Jeffrey? All right. Is there a motion?
Well, I think I have one more question for council. I'm sorry. Of the, the surety bond versus the cash performance, which do you prefer, probably?
Cash. Always.
Right, but this was a request from the principal, I assume?
Yeah, I didn't deal with the principal.
Okay, you dealt with, okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not unusual after a certain point of time. I don't know why the cash bond was posted initially. Maybe they couldn't get a bond. Because in order to get a surety bond for $850,000 as an LLC, you have to put up collateral and enter into a general indemnity agreement. A surety bond's not like insurance.
Right.
You know, a surety bond, you have to actually pay the company back if they spend one penny. And typically, to get a bond for that amount of money as an LLC, it looks like a single purpose LLC, so they probably have to provide some collateral. And that may have been the delay in getting the bond. It's an underwriting process that takes several months.
Well, I'm sure Capital did a very thorough assessment of the LLC.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It depends on who the underwriter is.
Okay.
There's lots of bond, lots of bad bond claims out there.
Okay.
Like I said, the main thing is that there are, you know, there are T-list sureties, so at least for the next few years, we should be fine.
Okay, so I, obviously, this is on our agenda because you feel comfortable with this as far as-
Yeah, I think, I think there's, I think the, I can't remember the dates right now, but I think it, I think five years from the date of the approval to complete the public improvements, and I think the approval was 2022.
Okay.
So, we're, you know, about halfway into it.
Okay.
But we should keep an eye on it. That's zoning office.
All righty. Thank you for your input. Thank you.
It's a little bit bigger than some of the bonds we've seen before.
Yeah.
In terms of dollars.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the town engineer does a bond estimate and gives it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and says, this is what I calculate the cost of the public improvements to be in the event that the contractor doesn't perform it.
The sidewalk or the edging?
Internal roadway for a subdivision.
Yeah, right. We release a lot of $5,000 bonds.
Sure. A lot of times, that's what's left, you know? A lot of times, they come in for a partial release as they do the work, and then we hold a little bit of money for punch list at the end. And then, once the punch list is completed, we release the final piece of it.
And that could be why, you know, they, to tie the cash up that long.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know-
It might make more sense to have other collateral.
$850,000 in an account that bears no interest to the benefit of the bond principal is not a, not a good business deal. It's good for the town, you know, certainly to hold that cash, but like I said, I wasn't involved in the discussions with the bond principal, so I don't know-
Okay.
-whether there was any, any pushback or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, did we read?
We did not read it.
Well, I'll read the first resolution, okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion, resolve the town of North Haven accepts the performance bond issued to the town as abougi by Capital Indemnity Corporation dated January 16th, 2024, in the amount of $850,000, bond number CIC 1909848, on behalf of bond principal 94 Warner Associates LLC, relative to the subdivision application for 87 Warner Road, which is P, Planning and Zoning Commission number P 22-10. Are we doing these together? Because there's an and, so we're doing one vote?
I think they're together.
Yeah, they're together.
Okay, and if you don't mind, Bill, I'll just continue. And I will motion that resolved in reliance upon the aforementioned performance bond issued by Capital Indemnity Corporation, with the express understanding that said performance bond is in lieu of the cash bond previously posted by 94 Warner Associates LLC. The town of North Haven releases the cash performance bond posted by 94 Warner Associates LLC on April 24th, 2023. Do we have to release, mention the amount in our resolution?
No, I think it's adequately arrived there.
Okay. Thank you. So, I made those, that motion for those two.
And I will second those resolutions as read by Sally.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill, you want property tax?
As we do at each meeting, I'll make a motion, nothing unusual, I'll make a motion to, to, to actually approve these property tax refunds.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much, Bill and Sally. Item number 10, the next regularly scheduled meeting here is on March 7th, here at Memorial Town Hall. That'll be at 6:30 here in the upstairs conference room, and I think you know it's going to be on the agenda at that meeting. So, with that being said, we will go to item number 11, public comments. Mary White.
Mary White Summerlane, I'm here again to make a request and to share more information. First, the request, please attend the wetlands commission meeting on Wednesday, February 28th, 7:00 PM, at the Rec Center Gym. Why attend? The public hearing for a permit to conduct regulated activity and a site plan referral for 250 Universal Drive has been continued. What have we learned about the 600,000 cubic yards of contaminated fill the applicant wants to bring into the site to cover up the hazardous material? Here are only 12 items that we've learned. One, we have confirmation of the transportation route the 29,300 contaminated fill carrying trucks and future trash haulers will take. They will be causing a public safety hazard by utilizing I-91, exit 9, north and south. North is already saturated where vehicles sit in the right lane, a quarter mile back or more, waiting to get off exit 9. New Haven Register article dated December 30th, 2023, called Waste Reclamation Facility Proposed for North Haven's Universal Drive, quote, "Part of the property is in New Haven, but Gambardella said truck traffic will not be routed through the city," close quote. Two, we have learned thousands of cubic yards of the contaminated fill will not be tested for clay, volatile organic compounds, VOCs, semi-volatile compounds, SVOCs, polychlorinated bifanils, PCBs, metals, pesticides, FASFAs, PAFAs, and extractable total petroleum hydrocarbons, ETPH. Let's just take one briefly. PAFAs do not break down in humans or the environment. PAFAs are forever chemicals that bioaccumulate and biomagnify through contamination of the food chains. That means poisoned is the water, food, and us. They have adverse health effects on humans and have ecotoxic effects in the aquatic and terrestrial systems. That means poison and death. A standard for using contaminated fill was put together by Connecticut Deep. It's called Guidance for Calculating the 95% Upper Confidence Level for Demonstrating Compliance with Remediation Standard Regulations, and that's 2024. The problem is, the more cubic yards of fill pass the initial testing ranges and amounts, the less amount of sample testing occurs. Connecticut Deep, we were told, will be doing random surprise testings. Three, we learned the wetlands commission does not want the contaminated fill to include clay because it is not water permeable, and it would destroy wetlands, water courses, and impact runoff rates. The contaminated fill will be what it is, which could be clay. The commission has no control. They want a blank check from the commission. Four, we were reminded the railroad is transporting nuclear waste down in that area. The federal government is allowing it. Five, we learned why they want to bring in so much contaminated fill, 600,000 cubic yards, and we learned about two dangerous hazardous mounds. One is less than 25 feet, and one is 25 feet, and both are on the property. Question, what is in the mounds? Answer, they will not look. And the state says they don't have to. So, on the property, aside from hazardous and toxic material, industrial waste, thousands of drums associated with Creosote plant, Creosote soaked railroad ties, coal, tires, solid waste, household waste, there is a strong possibility there is nuclear waste in the mounds. We learned the 2,134 square feet of wetlands they will destroy is in between the two mounds. They want to destroy that huge wetland- the two mounds. They want to destroy that huge wetland and fill the area to 25 feet, destroy 4.1 acres of wetland upland review areas and destroy buffers, and fill the second mound to 25 feet, cap it all, then put six inches of topsoil. The reason and motivation for doing this is so the facility can be built. The intention is to make a profit. Six, we learned from the commission and seen by the commission is there is aquatic life in some wetlands, and there are ducks, geese, birds on the property. We already know members of the commission eyewitness animals on the property, bears, deer, and wild cats. Seven, there is a possibility of vernal pools on the property. We learned the applicant went out off-season and didn't see any vernal pools. We learned the applicant isn't interested in vernal pools, since they would interfere with the plans to destroy wetlands, review areas, and buffers, and interfere with the development plans. Eight, we learned the commission will not know the type of contaminated fill going in, so it can't be determined the rate of runoff into the wetlands, which could be impacted, as well as impacting the Quinipiac River. Nine, in December, we were told we would learn where the test pits were done on the site. We still don't have that information. And one note, when I was looking through the file, it stated while they were doing test pits, a strong petroleum odor encountered. And also, it stated a strong Creosote odor encountered. Number 10, where will the monitors go on the property? None in the mounds. We still don't know where the monitors are going. Eleven, what are the state and federal endangered species on the property? We still don't know. Twelve, at that January 24th Wetlands meeting, it was stated, there will be no garbage smell associated with the facility, only equivalent to the smell of three diesel trucks. Are we to believe the thousands and thousands of garbage trucks delivering trash, including organic trash? When the garbage learns it's going to North Haven, it stops stinking? It was also stated, no toxins and no pollutants will be emitted from the facility. Are we to believe the physics of burning trash and subsequent toxic emissions ceases to exist in the facility? To conclude, please help stop the destruction of 2,134 square feet of wetlands, 4.1 acres of wetland upland review, review areas and buffers, and help save our town from becoming the toxic trash dump for the region by attending the Wetlands Commission meeting on Wednesday, February 28th, 7:00 PM, at the Rec Center Gym. And tell the commission to protect the wetlands and vote no on the special permit to conduct regulated activity and vote a negative site plan referral. One last note, call land use on February 28th to verify 250 Universal's still on the agenda, and opposition letters can be written to the commission, care of Alan Fredrickson, land use administrator at
Thank you, Mary. Mike Kaplan?
Hi. I have all this paper, but I'm not going to read it. I brought a copy for you.
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Yep, so.
Apologize, I wasn't sure.
Oh, no, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there's a three-page letter on top. I'm not going to read it, but just to speak to some of the same themes that are within it.
Just identify.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Kaplan, 6 Old Orchard Road, North Haven, resident. Well, I guess first, I wanted to thank the select board. I'd say that North Haven has a reputation for good governance, and that that's because of the efforts of the select board, as well as the officers, staff, and other appointed officials in the town. And I think it's particularly impressive that it has that reputation today amongst a broad group of people, regardless of their individual party affiliation. And I've come to meet a number of officials and staff members over the last couple of months due to AB EcoPark, but, and that application to the Inland Wetland Commission. But I'm not here to speak to the, the merits of that application, per se. What I'm concerned about is information that's been provided to the select board that has been, I'd say, incomplete and would have the effect of being misleading. And that some of that information has already been used, I'd say understandably, by the select board for certain actions that relate to the project and in an ongoing basis as well. So what I'm referring to are two things there. So, one, the request from the Cedar Hills Infrastructure Improvement District and AB EcoPark for a letter of support from the town for those parties' application to the Department of Economic and Community Development for $4 million grant that was presented as being for remediation. And second, that this is a large, complicated project that will have a long permitting, multi-step permitting and approval process, and it's understandable that multiple officials within town have attempted to try and direct residents to frame their comments within the scope of a particular authority that's, or body that's looking at it. However, that has the perhaps inadvertent effect of being, in a way, an advocate for the project, and that comes back to the incomplete information. The applicant has made an assertion that they are providing an application inland wetlands that's consistent with our regulations. I, I would, I disagree with their assertion in terms of what they've presented as the scope of wetland impacts and the purpose and use of the site once their desired actions are taken, that it's not consistent with the commitment contractual commitments that they are making to the state. It's not consistent with the expected permitting process that they will actually go through, and in many other simple ways, inconsistent with multiple provisions within our inland wetland laws. So I'm not, my concern is not about how would an incinerator affect air. It's that, from a starting point of, this is a very complicated site based on the history, and so diligence and planning are needed at each step of the way, and clear communication, and we haven't gotten that yet. So, let me just see if I can go in a bit deeper on one thing. Couple of the examples that I called out in the letter on the grant application. So it was presented to the town as, quote, "this is a, a grant for remediation." The proposal without all the attachments is included in this packet, and the proposal makes it clear that the grant is for remediation and redevelopment. And the remediation is really more of just a small step in there. That they are not separated, they are completely integrated. That the contractual commitments is demonstrated by the, the third document in here, which is the financial assistant proposal from the Department of Economic and Community Development, makes that, that integration of remediation and redevelopment crystal clear. That, that, I'm going to call it the FAP because it's just too many long things. So, the FAP states that it defines this as two projects, brownfield cleanup and the redevelopment. And the obligations, and redevelopment is expressly defined as the waste reclamation facility and zero-carbon power plant, which is the euphemism used for the, what in other documents from AB EcoPark are referred to as the mass burn incinerator and the generator. So, the FAP says that there will be a mortgage on the site, and that if the incinerator and waste reclamation facility are not built, that the state can foreclose on the site. The FAP states that there will be land use restrictions that will be deeded that will require that for 10 years, it must be, the site must be used for waste, as a waste reclamation facility. The DECD has to do an environmental impact evaluation as part of this grant. That evaluation does not consider what is being presented to us as this intermediate remediation only step, because that doesn't exist. That, that step, per Connecticut statute and regulation, must look at all of the actions that are associated with the project. And so, from correspondence with the director of the department in charge of this grant, it is their expectation that that environmental impacts evaluation will be of the whole project. They will not be considering any, any outcome that is just remediation. That does not exist. So, then if we look at other permits, we've, there's been a real opportunity for more, for clearer and more precise answers from the applicant, and there have been a lot of materials in the Inland Wetland Commission application review and hearings that have not been present, that would be typical and customary for a project like this, and that would actually help address some of these, these questions that I'm, that I'm raising here about what is the, the appropriate scope of the project, and is it, was it fair or not fair to present this as just a remediation grant? So, the remedial action plan is one of the, the principal steps, right, in this redevelopment. When, there's a redevelopment project that a remedial action plan is based on, that is supposed to be within the, within the plan. The measurement of, of post-action conditions at the site are based on that redevelopment plan. If that's the case, then there, the permits that they will be, that AB EcoPark will be going out for will be for the whole project. There will be no permits for this intermediate step, unless they cannot stop at just this intermediate step. We have all these inevitable actions that come after. So, I would, once, I, I reached out to Mr. Gambardella to, to let him know that I would be here this evening, and I heard back from him this morning, but didn't know whether he would be attending or not. You know, I'd like to ask that, once Mr. Gambardella has an opportunity to provide some additional information, provide his perspective on it, I'd like to understand whether the board still feels comfortable with a recommendation to the Department of Economic, Economic and Community Development, that the, that the town wholeheartedly supports the proposed pod, project, now that the materials that have been provided show that the project means something different than what one would reasonably think in the email that requested the support.
So, Mike, you know, we've had several discussions, you and I, this past week, and I asked the town attorney to stay for this portion. I told him you'd be here. So, he's going to digest all the information, and, you know, he's worked with Bill Gambardella in the past, so we'll see how this ends up. But we can't minimize what Mary White said. It's still an active application in wetlands. So, and in reading the documents that you gave to me, it's clear that the state supports this. It's clear that Governor Lamont decided he wanted the $4 million. He authorized it with the DECD.
I think there's actually more nuance to it than that. So, one of the things that I've, that I learned from speaking with, oh, I'm sorry.
The town attorney's willing to speak, but, Mike, finish your thought first, okay? Then Jeff will come up.
I think in, in many different environments, it's often that there are multiple groups looking at a complicated thing, and different groups expect that other ones are doing certain, certain actions, certain steps. So, from talking with the Department of Economic and Community Development, Brownfield Remediation and Redevelopment representative, what I learned was that for diligence in a lot of this material, they're actually, they're, they're relying on other parties. It's not DECD that's diligence-ing, you know, is this viable? And, yes, there is, there is a problem with waste in the state, but that doesn't mean that this, at least as it's been brought forward now, is the solution. And given the complexity of the site, what I would hope is that the developer were in a position to be able to clarify these matters, to create a, obviously, others know him for a longer time, and, and the other parties involved for a longer time, but to withdraw the, I think, withdraw the inland wetland application in order to complete the tasks that would be required for even the scope that was requested there, and put the best foot forward for the project so that it could be evaluated. But, as it stands now, yes, there's a problem with waste. That doesn't mean that what's been presented here, as it's been presented, is supported or the solution. And thank you very much for the time.
Of course. So, Mike, instead, we'll hear it, our town attorney, Jeff, as he say.
I just wanted to comment that, in response to Mrs. White and Mr. Kaplan's comments, if you look at the minutes of the December 20th Inland Wetlands Commission meeting, you'll see that the commission unanimously found that the activity, what's pending at the Inland Wetlands Commission is an application for a permit to conduct regulated activity in the wetlands, okay? And what the commission unanimously found at the December 20th meeting is that the proposed activity constitutes a significant impact activity to the wetlands, which is a defined term within the regulations. Under Section 7.4 of North Haven's inland wetlands regulations, once the commission finds that the proposed regulated activity constitutes a significant impact activity, the applicant has to provide a considerable amount of additional information. And if you look at 7.4 of the regulations, regulations are online, of course, you'll see that among the information that's required are soils reports and environmental assessment analysis of the proposed fill material. So, you know, I certainly would encourage anybody and everybody that has any interest in this to be at the next Wetlands Commission meeting. I understand that there has been an intervener. There was an application to intervene that's been granted by the commission, so certainly the public interest is, is important for this, and everybody should attend the meeting and listen to what additional information, find out about what additional information is being provided under Section 7.4 of the regulations. I know the commission's very serious about doing their job, so I just wanted to add that little piece of information about the finding of a significant impact activity and what that means under the regs.
All right, Mike?
One, one quick addition. So, I greatly appreciated that, that reference to, to Section 7.41, and many of the things that I was describing relate back to Section 7.41 and requirements of that. But the comment I wanted to make was that the January 24th Inland Wetland Commission, that was the first time that I'd attended one of those hearings. And in addition to the diligence and diplomacy, and frankly, just our kind in the approach to some matters, I, I thought that it was very clear that the commission was working very hard to, to take the many concerns from the town and keep everything within the scope of, of what fits the Inland Wetland Commission. And so, it was just very, very gratifying to, to see how well they operate in this.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Mike. All right, Tom, did you have your hand up? Tom White, are you good? You good? All right, okay, Sherman Katz?
Good evening, Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive. I went to that Wetlands meeting. I was there most of the time, but I couldn't stay the whole night. I'm an engineer. In my past, I did have to visit the Hartford Dump for business. I also visited the... I also visited the garbage disposal barges in Long Island. And a dump is a dump is a dump. You can't control what's going to come out of that dump. They're not going to control what goes into the dump. The fact that the governor's in support of this doesn't faze me, because he's in support of all major, very expensive, wealthy prospects.
Sherman, can I just, let me clarify. The governor's supported the grant. It's deep that's supporting the project.
But he's supporting the money.
Right.
The 400,000, uh, the 4 million, it was the $4 million.
Yeah.
Uh, he's good with special interest groups, it's a vote getter, and as much as I'll say about our illustrious governor. We spent many, many years trying to get rid of or put the reins on Upjohn. I was there when it was Carwin Company prior to Upjohn, and I worked with some of the people in town about trying to get rid of or control Upjohn. I worked a little bit with the DEP, and they were about as much help as that rug down there. They did their sampling when they were not releasing fumes to the air. I asked them why they only go up in noon time. Well, that's when, that's when we go. But they don't put the fumes out until 10, 11 o'clock at night. I, I don't believe you're going to get the kind of controls that we need. I replaced the pool, my pool liner three times with Upjohn because of the chemicals that were in the air. That's just, I, I'm totally against the whole thing. Not just the wetland situation, but what's going to be in the end. This is a small town, 24, 26,000 people in it, and you're going to release all kinds of fumes that are going to travel from the southwest to the, to the north end of town, up in the Blue Hill section as well as the railroad section. I don't think you really want to do that, Mike.
Well, Sherman, first of all, I think you got to go back to what Mary said. You got to go to the Wetlands Commission.
I understand.
You got to voice the same opinion to Wetlands.
But it goes beyond the wetlands. Once they allow the, once he allow the wet, once the Wetlands allows it, everything is going to be rubber stamped.
Well, that's not the case. You know, because then we have to go through, that has to go through planning and zoning. There's two barriers here. There's wetlands, and then there's planning and zoning.
Right, yes, I know. Because, Mike, I've been involved in that for many years too. But where's your support? Where, where do you support?
I've, I've been public, and I've said that I support it going through the regulatory processes. That's my support.
You support the pro, but the project, not, not the regulatory process?
I support, I support any project that, any developer that wants to apply to the regulatory bodies. I have to support that, and that's what I'm doing. So, I'm gathering information too, because I'm not at the Wetlands meetings, I'm listening to all the feedback, I'm listening to the pros and cons of this. So, there's a lot of good points that are made. But Sherman, you know, you've known me here for 15 years. Mike Freed is not the king of North Haven. There are regulatory bodies. Government is different, in the sense that we have to allow processes to go through. This is a form of government where the people speak their minds. I want the people.
Your opinion is very valuable to the people in this town.
I'm not going to influence an application either way. I have to let it go through the process.
I've seen you stand up at the budget hearings and say, "I'm in favor of this budget."
Well, that's different, Sherman. That's a municipal budget. That's much different than an application in front of a regulatory body.
You're the chief executive officer of this town. You're the boss.
I'm going to say it again. I support Wetlands hearing it, and I support whatever decision they make, and then it has to go to planning and zoning. And even if it got there, this project is years and years away, if, i- i- in terms of it, in terms of it materializing, even if planning and zoning.
Well, we, we won't be here when, if this ever happens.
Right. So, what I'm not going to do.
Long after we're gone.
What I'm not going to do, Sherman, on any application, is publicly denounce an application that's in front of a commission or a body. That is my stance on this.
Okay.
And you should know that. You've been following this government for 15 years, and longer.
55.
55 years.
I'm 56 years old.
And I appreciate your, I appreciate your, you know, the fact that you're skeptical, that they can do what they said they can do. And I think Mary was saying the same thing.
Yeah. I'm supporting what Mary said. I, I don't do the research, Mary does.
That they really won't be able to do what they said they can do. But if you look at, you know, from what Mike just passed out, you know, I think the project is a waste reclamation facility designed to handle a significant portion of the state's solid waste. It will recycle and divert up to 90% of the incoming waste stream from the landfill. Will produce bio-CNG, liquid CO2, hydrogen distilled water, hydroponically grown produce, commercially farmed fish, and house a data center on-site without requiring any service or outside utilities, except for startup or occasional downtime. And if they can do that, would it be okay? And if they can't, I guess it wouldn't be.
We, we had to close the North Haven dump on state, on Sacagawea Road.
It's hard to say whether what they're promising is...
Because the D, was it the state or the DEP said we were leaching into the Quinnipiac River? Our little waste area was leaching into the Quinnipiac area. This is going to leach into the whole Long Island Sound. All right. Mike, I was going to ask you about the hotel on Universal Drive, but you took care of that already. It'd be nice to see that after five, six years it's been in the works.
It's going to happen, Sherman.
Okay, good. They have a beautiful place in Hampden, I had to put somebody up there. I'd rather have them in North Haven. Okay. I've been contacted by several residents that are concerned about the budget increase. The increase, I know that you want to see no more than a 1 mil increase. The proposed, the, the discussions that are going on could be 4.4 mils if it's passed, I understand that. And, and some of the numbers on that, your home value, your home taxes could go up anywhere from $700 to $900 a month, very easily. I'm sorry, a, a year. A year. Your, your automobile taxes would go up also. So, if you're, you're looking at maybe $60, $70 more a month to live in North Haven.
Isn't there a cap on automobile?
Yeah, 30, yeah, 35 mils.
No.
Is it 35 with the state?
It's in the 32 to 33 range.
We're already over.
Already over that stuff, yeah.
We're already over the motor vehicle tax.
And the state wants to take over the motor vehicle tax. I don't know if they still want to do it.
So, your point about the motor vehicle tax is incorrect, because you're still going to, we're still going to be capped at a rate that's lower than what the mil rate could be.
Okay, I stand corrected. This puts a very big burden on seniors in this town. Seniors on fixed income that this year got 3.2% increase on their social security. I think, I could be wrong, that the average social security is somewhere around $1,200 or $1,400 a month in, in, in this area, in the state of Connecticut. They'll have to make a choice between staying here, having their medications, having their food, paying for their heat. That's a significant increase. The other thing is the budget workshops. In the past several years, I, I had asked for the public to be able to ask questions at the budget workshop, and, and both times, both chairmen said, "No, we cannot make request, we cannot make any requests, ask any questions. The public cannot do that." The reason given by one chairman was it would confuse the board. Well, I always thought we had some pretty intelligent people on the board, and I don't think you can get confused. I don't attend the budget workshops, because there's no sense in me sitting there and just listening to what's going on. You know, I get up and I have to shoot off my mouth. So, for that reason, that's why I don't go to the budget workshops. And I don't know why we're not allowed to. I don't know if it's, if it's legal to keep us quiet. That would be something for, for the attorney to come up with. It's, it's, as I understand it, it was a one-person decision that we can't speak. And, one of the reasons I bring that up is, I watched some of the budget workshops, and there was only one person asking questions, basically. Most of the questions were asked by one member of the board, and I think the other people couldn't think about it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Tom, you had a comment? Yep.
Tom White, Summer Lane. I'm here this evening to ask town residents to please attend the planning and zoning meeting on Monday, February 5th, at the North Haven Library Community Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. The zone change application to EH, Elderly Housing for 61 Quinnipiac Avenue, has been continued. If you live on Cindy Lane, Deverell Lane, or in that neighborhood, please attend. There is a plan to overdevelop the property with a four-story high-rise building. Please attend the meeting to have your voices heard. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, sir.
James Gregg, 17-year-old orchard, North Haven resident.
Can you say your last name here?
Greg, G-R-E-G-G.
Thank you.
I'll speak briefly on AB EcoPark one last time, hopefully. Look, we're, we're all concerned about the environmental impacts and, and those impacts on our town as well. But I'll just say one thing that kind of like spawned up earlier in this meeting, it's an ambitious proposal. Gambardella has said many times that, you know, he's seen these digesters in Germany, and like, they're amazing. Well, he's also said that this would be the first of its kind with any of these, you know, new, clean, and complex technologies all in one facility. Look, I'm here to say I'd love that dream, like, here in North Haven, but, you know, let's, let's think about that for just a second. This isn't, you know, Germany, and there are too many unanswered questions to make us all kind of believers of that. And he talked about all the, cited all those, you know, different points they had in this proposal. I mean, we're talking like basic fundamental questions, you know, like, does the select board know where the AB EcoPark's proposed two-mile route is, and where it would connect to the Algonquin Pipeline for all this natural gas? Will we need like imminent domain for that? Maybe they're too far down the line for that, but, you know, none of these logistical connections and connection points or pathways have any sort of plan behind them. You know, let's see, we have something like, there was no formal yes or no, whether this anaerobic digester, 250, Universal Drive, received a permit approval from DEEP, and, you know, or a name given for the, who the applicant was. We're also, we've asked for things for that in writing as well. Does the select board know when DEEP approved like a permit application for the AB EcoPark site in the past? These are things that you may or may not know, if they actually happened. Do you know where, oh, do you know where the EcoPark project plans to connect to the electric transmission system, right? These are basic, hook up your generating power, and you have an incinerator, you know, how's that going to work? The interconnect of the high voltage lines is described as being on, on the other side of the Quinnipiac River next to the Amtrak. Okay, when, like, well, where and how does it get there? How much land do they need at that point of the interconnection? So, these are just logistical, you know, town planning kinds of things to make this dream kind of a reality beyond environmental impacts, beyond the impacts to our town. So, I think to, thinking back on everybody else, it's a much bigger and complex thing, and, you know, we'll have to look to the process.
Thank you, James. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Is this, is this, is this, I guess, is this select board aware of where the infrastructure that James was asking about his plan for? It's not in any of the drawings.
It's not this board. Sally, you want to come on?
I, no. Okay.
We don't, no, we don't.
Okay.
So.
I wish, I wish we did. I thank you very...
It's like those, you know, things that spawn conversation. Where is it?
Mr. Kaplan, I thank you very much for this packet of very good information. Thank you.
If you have more, I did want to...
I'm never overwhelmed.
See, like, I, I think as Greg was saying too, it's, it'd be great if it would, you know, but on the other side of the coin is, I think, like, Sherman's, you know, Mary was very detailed, but Truman, like, maybe encapsulated it on the other extreme, a dump is a dump. And, you know, we definitely don't want a dump to be a dump in this case. So, but, you know, like you said, there's a lot of, and I think it was Mike's point as well, that it all's part of maybe getting all the details and, you know, and do they really have those details?
Today, we haven't seen, so that's our concern.
Yeah, today, we haven't seen anything, so that's our concern. And, yeah, I think Mary was saying some of the same things, just in terms of remediation before we can get to the, to the second half, the real, the real beat of the project.
The project seems not developed enough to be requesting the time and approval processes that it has requested.
But that's why I think we have the plan, you know, and I'm not an expert in planning and zoning or in inland wetlands. And that's hopefully why we have those boards and the other members who've had a lot of experience listening to a lot of, many, many different proposals, including like the one that Tom's mentioned that's going before P and Z on, on the 5th.
Right. See, this board doesn't manage those boards. That's what Bill's saying. We don't, Tom is, is appealing to the public to go to the planning and zoning meeting. This board doesn't micromanage the activities of all the boards. We are a separate board. We don't, we don't supervise their activities on the boards. That's the way it works in this government.
My, my assessment of the infrastructure is more thinking as an indicator of the, the grant application presents a close relationship between the town in North Haven and AB EcoPark and the development, and how fair, there's obviously, there are things that the town had to do to facilitate and support the creation of the Cedar Hills Improvement District, and there are other normal, appropriate things, but if information like, well, where's this two-mile gas pipeline that's going to go, is reported to go to the center of North Haven, if that hasn't been shared, if the location of where the interconnection hasn't been shared, because that, that can be quite significant infrastructure, that is an indicator of how, how appropriate it is to, for the developer to describe it as being a closer collaborative.
See, like, that, what you just mentioned, would, would be part of a site plan with planning and zoning, if it ever got to that.
Well, let's come back, come back to, I'm praying I listened to the grant application because the, the developer had asked for a letter of support from the town for the grant application, for this overall proposal, and within it talked about the close relationship with the town. So, that's why I bring back to this board, but I, I, I hear you, you brought your, you hear the point of the select board, and there's the division of responsibilities within government, and the select board has its license and other corporate statements.
And there is a relationship between the town and the Cedar Hills District, which was created by the General Assembly, which we voted on at this board years ago. So, the Cedar Hills District was memorialized by the General Assembly, and we had public comment, we had public meetings on that also, so...
And I had concerns about testimony that was provided to the Planning and Development Committee of the General Assembly as part of the 6640, that there was test, there was testimony about description of the AB EcoPark project, and it included a statement. It included certain statements, and it exceeded certain orders. It included a statement that an anaerobic digester had been permitted by to have the site. I haven't found anything. I've reached out to DEEP and was told that they're not aware of anything. I saw that, that same comment in, that was actually made again on Wednesday night at the Wetlands Commission. Well, what, what's real and what isn't? Like, what, what's that meaning? So, what, what has happened, what hasn't? Because I, I don't think it's appropriate to say, if there was no anaerobic digester that had been received permit from DEEP for the AB EcoPark site, it shouldn't have been said that there was. Maybe there was, and it's just under some strange name or something else, and we can't be found. And I know that they've been multiple requests for that information through people in writing, and hopefully we'll get that. But the, the lack of clear, crisp, precise answers adds additional worry to what one would naturally have to a waste incinerator, and to what was, I think, presented as the first time ever that all of these complex technologies were being integrated together.
Okay, Mrs. Barrett, yes?
I just, one, one, just a minute, Mrs. Barrett. I, I do recall Mr. Gambardella appearing before the Board of Selectmen several years ago. I'm going to have to study our agendas and, and find that, because I will be honest, at, at sitting here at this moment, I don't recall if it was just an informative, it had to do with this property, though. Was it just informative? Did we make a vote? So, I have to educate myself and do a little... So, I have to educate myself and do a little research to, to recollect the reason why he was here. I, I agree with what the first selectman has said about this Board of Selectmen, we are an administrative board, we do not control the boards and commissions. We have a charter that we, we have some elected, some appointed, the P and Z is elected, Inland Wetlands is appointed. They have their own sets of regulations that have been adopted at our town meeting, our legislative body, and they are, are representatives in enforcing those regulations to the best of their ability. And I have full confidence that they will enforce them. However, as, as the third selectman on this board in other issues in this town, maybe not quite the magnitude of a project this size, I, I have spoken for or against proposals and, but I do so as a citizen and I have attended, for example, I attended a recreation commission meeting last year because I was concerned about the environmental impact and, and dangers of a bike route construction at Peters Rock. And I went as a private citizen to that commission and spoke against that bicycle development and ultimately it was removed. And I believe you might have spoken.
Yeah, see, that's our property though. We own that property.
Yeah, right.
So, we all spoke out against it. We own the property.
So, you know, but, so, so to Mr. Frida's point, we, we, we as a board don't micromanage these boards. As a citizen, we, I certainly, Mr. Frida may feel differently because of his position as far as having an impact, you know, I'm not afraid to go to a board and commission and give my opinion, but I have to be careful as well. But I have great, great confidence in our inland wetlands and you yourself, Mr. Kaplan, said you were impressed when you went to the January 24th meeting, your first meeting, of the, the level of effort and professionalism that they have. So, I, you know, I, I, also, I've learned just from the volume of information that you've given me tonight, I, I've been following this story, of course, but I, I think I have to follow it, I have to learn a lot more. So, I wish you didn't feel that we'd be overwhelmed and, and you gave me more stuff because I will be, I know what I'm going to be doing tonight, which is reading all of this. So, I, I appreciate you asking, what is this board, how does this board feel? But we really, as, as the selectmen's, first selectman said, we don't control other boards and we have to let our process, which is defined in our charter, to play out. But I will make a point of learning more and I will not be afraid to speak up on this issue as a citizen.
To clarify what I meant to be requesting.
Yes.
There's an expression that you don't know what you've said until you find out what is heard.
Okay.
And I had, I guess, two, two principal requests. One, given that, I mean, I'm not asking the select board to intervene in any other board's activities. What I was trying to do was to caution that some things that are being said by the select board may actually be inadvertently doing that because with the understandable rationale of trying to keep the concerns and comments that people were bringing forward in the current processes within the scope of those processes, and there were expressions of, we're just talking about, you know, like these 2,100 square feet of wetland or these five acres, but that is conceding the applicant's assertion of what the appropriate scope is. And it does not seem to be the scope that the inland wetland commission seems to agree with based on some of their comments, and it does not seem to be consistent with our inland wetlands. So, I was trying to caution of a way that the board may not be aware that would be stepping users. And then the second thing was, given that the, the three selectmen were requested to provide the, the letter of, or email support for the grant application, based on what I see as a deeply concerning description of what the project was, whether that would affect that decision, because it seems like that is within the scope. Do we, do we provide a recommendation or not? Because we already did. So, it's an action that was already taken by, perhaps I'm labeling it a little bit incorrectly by that, you know, for the select board, but I'm trying to keep my, my comments narrow and within what I understand to be the scope of this.
Okay. Well, I've, I've never met you before. You're a very impressive person and you obviously are very passionate about this issue and I thank you very much for coming here. I wish more citizens would, would come to these meetings and I'm sure my fellow members.
Well, I told, well, Mike and I have been talking all week on this.
Oh, okay. Well, I still am happy you're here. You're very, you seem very compassionate and about this and you're very well informed and thank you for your, your information.
All right, thanks, Mike. Yeah, nice talking to you this past week also several times. Mrs. Barrett.
That's also true for Tom and Mary and Truman all, you know, coming to the board. I very much appreciate, you know, you all coming to the board too and commenting regularly because I know a lot of, you know, if people listed anything, they may listen to this board meeting. So, I think it gives you a chance to maybe air your opinions on issues that, you know, that you two plus Truman, I think, have brought up over the years that people might not hear elsewhere, so. Thank you for coming as well.
Mrs. Barrett, you've been patiently waiting.
Nancy Barrett, one, one Crespi Drive. And I, I'd like to just echo those, those same sentiments that Bill just, just said that I actually attended the, the January Inland Wetlands meeting and it was really impressive to see, not the first, but now the second marathon. It was, that meeting went on for hours and to see the number of people that attended, to see people like Mary and some of my, my neighbors here that are really doing their homework and not pointing fingers, but just really trying to educate the public and provide information that allows us all to make informed decisions, I think is, that's the essence of democracy. So, it's, it's, it's great to see it in action. I, I have to say that I certainly am very concerned about the potential impact of this particular proposal. Having lived through Upjohn and the Tire Pond and the Crumb Rubber Infill Turf Fields, I think that all of those will pale by comparison with, with the potential for this particular proposal. And I also have faith in, in our systems in, in terms of our various boards and commissions. And I was very happy to hear that the, the commissioners were really demanding a very clearly articulated roadmap.
They are.
Of exactly what are you proposing? Because of course, from the first meeting to the second meeting, there was a pretty dramatic change in what they were actually proposing and which section they were going to start with in terms of the remediation. And for anyone who has actually seen the pictures of this particular property, I don't see how it's possible to simply remediate a very small little section and feel as though that will be safe and not impacted by all of the toxic wasteland around it. It's kind of like building a, a sandcastle on the beach, you know, once, once the tide comes in, it's, it's all back down to flat again. So, so I, one thing that I would like to see more of is both at the level of the inland wetlands and then if it does actually go forward to P and Z, I would like to hear more from our town engineer. I know that Andy Bevelacqua is very involved in this. He shows up with his giant binder at each one of these meetings, but I would love to be able to hear his perspective and his expertise on, on every step of this process because I think, as has been pointed out, the complication is that this is private property, but it is impacting town-owned property. It certainly could be something that would be impacting our inland wetlands and potentially contaminating our, our water systems. So, so I think it becomes this series of contingencies and so I think we need to understand the relationship between all of these contingencies. And from what I understand so far, if this project does not go forward, meaning it's shot down either by inland wetlands or P and Z, I don't think that any of that property will be remediated. So, I, I think that the, the remediation is contingent upon the project going forward. And I think that's, that's the really sad part because it really is our tax dollars from our state government that would be paying for this remediation. And so, I don't, I don't believe that it would happen unless it goes forward. And I'm not arguing for it to go forward, I just think that understanding that connection is important. So, that's, that's point number one. Point number two, in terms of the ordinance that you described earlier for the surviving spouses of both police officers and firefighters who are killed in the line of duty, I think it's just, I, I agree with all of the changes that this board has made. I think it is very important to emphasize that the language, which I don't have in front of me, only the three selectmen have in front of them, that the death in the line of duty must be sudden, it must be unexpected, and it must be a death that is directly caused by their duties in, as either a police officer or a firefighter. And I think that, and most importantly, I think that the death, the cause of death needs to be determined by a medical professional under any circumstance. We cannot have the, the fire chief determining, you know, that someone died in the line of duty. That, that is something that has to be determined by a medical professional, the cause of death and whether that would have happened under any other circumstances. That's just my personal opinion. And when I came before this board last month and you were discussing the language, I pointed out that we have actually lost one police officer and, and two firefighters during the past year. And I think if we're going to do this in a fair and objective way, that the order of operations matters, that I think that the Board of Selectmen has to finalize the language, it has to be approved at a town meeting, and then we apply the details of each and every case to the specific stipulations in the ordinance. And then if an individual's surviving spouse qualifies, then they receive the benefit. I was told that only two of the three currently qualify and I think that that is premature. You can't be making a determination before the language is even approved and I, I think that that seems both, you know, biased and premature. I think we have to have it finalized.
No, it's not biased, Nancy. There's reasons for it that I can't get into here in a public forum.
Mm-hmm. But again, either we're going to have an unbiased structure that is defined in an ordinance and then things are applied after the fact, or you go into it with this notion that one will, will, will qualify and one won't. That, that to me seems inappropriate.
But it's, I can't get into it here because you don't know what I know, so I can't, I can't tell you.
I'm certain that's the case, but this isn't just about three people, right? This is forevermore that this ordinance will be in place. So, I'm hoping that all of the stipulations will be absolutely clear and that all cases will be applied.
But that was the purpose of all this discussion today.
Absolutely.
So, we had, we had comments, the town attorney's going to put the comments into a memorialized document.
Right.
And that is the unbiased version. We had the comments, we accepted it from Sally, we accepted what Bill brought some things up we couldn't do. I support both Sally's opinion on this, so it's, it's an unbiased document is what it will be.
Well, before last month's meeting, the volunteer firefighters weren't even included. So, it is still an evolution in process.
Well, we just, we just agreed here tonight that we asked any other questions and everybody seems confident and comfortable with, with the feedback that they've given.
I understand.
So, we've evolved.
But prior to tonight, you already told me that two will qualify and one will not.
But there's a reason for it, okay? And I can't tell you the reason tonight because it's a family matter, that's why.
Okay.
So, let's not make assumptions when you don't know the full facts.
I'm not making any assumptions. I'm simply stating what you told me last month and I'm simply reacting to that.
Well, you accepted it last month when I told you.
I said that that was surprising.
Well.
And I was surprised by it last month and I'm still surprised by it today. So, again, as I, as I heard about it last month, I, again, didn't have the language in front of me, you, the three of you.
All right. So, tonight, we finalize the language, the town attorney's going to bring it back to us next month.
Great, okay.
One thing I'd like to say, to Nancy's point about only we have seen the, the document once, just going forward to next month when counsel gets us the final draft with the changes we discussed tonight and we call the town meeting, maybe we could put the, you know, mark it as a proposed ordinance online at least like a week before the town meeting. Because sometimes we don't do that and people are just handed this document and I look back in the audience and I just people, see people flipping, you know, so it's a lot to ask people to, to read it right there at the meeting. So, if we could just put it on the town website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Website. And it's always, when we propose an ordinance and bring it to a town meeting, it's always made available in the clerk's office as well. And I think there have been times when it's been on the, on the website.
Yeah, right.
That's part of the.
But I just think the website is, is an easier way for people to read it than, than the town clerk's office.
No, I agree.
And it's also, I, I believe, published in the paper, isn't it?
So, is the ordinance language actually in the paper or just the call?
Okay, Phil.
I, I think we, don't we put the ordinance in?
After it's approved, it is published and then it becomes effective 15 days after publication.
I think our notice says that there's a copy available for viewing at the town clerk.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. That's what the notice says. So, I'm just saying, instead of just saying that, maybe a week before, we could put it on the, the website just to facilitate people having the opportunity to read and digest it. I think that's just a proper.
Yeah, I think I've done that actually in the last ordinance.
Yeah, okay. We haven't always.
Usually when I post the notice on the website, I usually post the ordinance with it.
Oh, okay. All right.
But I'll make sure that we do it.
Yes, I know that with the supernumerary, but whatever, we're moving forward, so that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one last thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. So, I, I read an article in the New Haven Register and this is me, just as a citizen, I'm, have not wearing my board finance hat. So, in this article in the New Haven Register, the, the fire chief was making the case that, for more personnel and that is warranted in our town. And I read in another article that the police chief is also making this, this, the same argument. And, and Mr. Frida had said in, in the same article that the public should feel very safe in North Haven. And so, I'm very interested to hear from the three selectmen, how do you feel about that particular statement? Do you agree with Mr. Frida that, that the people of North Haven should feel very safe at this particular time?
Do you mean with regard to, because you mentioned that they need, that they're requesting new person.
Budget aside, budget aside.
Budget aside.
Absolutely, budget aside. Just currently, should the people of North Haven feel currently safe with respect to emergency response from our police and fire department?
I think that the fire department does a, a great job with their response times, especially to structure fires. I have spoken one-on-one with some firefighters and they are very proud of their response times, so I.
They should be.
I, and as far as the police, I think we have a great police department and I'm very happy with our, I, I still call him the new chief. I don't know how, how long does he have to keep being called that? But I, and I, I think that it's a daunting task to be a police officer and, you know, we, we certainly are still having problems with, with break-ins. I don't know really how to stop that, but I feel that, that, that North Haveners more or less should feel safe. You have to be careful, you have to take precautions, don't, don't, you know, they, they say, you know, if you're a woman in a parking lot leaving a stop at Shopper Shop right with a purse, you're a marked woman, so you, you have to use your own senses to protect yourself because police cannot be everywhere. But I think that our, we are blessed with a very efficient and professional police department and a fire department. So, I am satisfied with our police department and fire department as is.
Things, things don't stay the same forever. And I think that was, you know, our fire chief pointed that out is, is that as we've declined to so few volunteers and the standards for, you know, and he said this over a number of budget cycles that you've been at and I've been at too.
For sure.
That, you know, the minimum number of people to control a fire is what, 15, 17 people. If we only have 11 on 10 or 11. If we only have 11 on, 10 or 11 on, plus maybe a chief or the assistant chief, we're going to be below the minimum number to respond to a fire. And, we always then need mutual aid and are dependent upon other towns to provide another engine. So, you know, I think the standard maybe, you know, maybe changes, where for safety reasons, you do need greater control and involvement, especially based on, you know, based on the fact that nothing is, nothing is the same. And, I think the factor that's changed is the shrinkage on the volunteer side. So, do we feel safe now? Yep. But, as the fire chief said, the, you know, with the number of incidents that they have to respond to, under a worst-case scenario, you know, if he has a fire and a couple of medical calls at the same time, if there's a third medical call or a second fire, he doesn't have the resources.
But, that's why we have Nelsonian.
Right. So, I mean, that's where, you know, we are safe, but under extraordinary circumstances, and we have an aging population, as Sherman pointed out in town. So, the people who need the services the most are maybe in, the dilemma, the quandary we have, is some of the people who can, who most need the services, in terms of medical response, are at least able to afford it, to afford to pay the higher taxes. So, we're trying to balance all those competing things. Same thing on the police side, you know, one of the things that we've seen recently that continues to happen, well, we had an influx, or we had a, people stealing catalytic converters. Well, you know, then we have these street takeovers, and we've had a few here in town. That's something new. And, as the fire chief pointed out, and also the police chief knows, you know, we're defending too, you know, traffic has picked up again on 91 and the Merritt Parkway. So, we, at the same time, have to respond to medical or accidents with both police and fire support potentially on the highways. So, you know, so, are we safe? Yes. Will we continue to be safe based on, you know, an increase in crime, maybe more needs for fire and medical attention, maybe not, without trying to figure out ways that we could increase our public safety and at the same time afford it? So, I think that's, you know, from being on the Board of Finance, that's, as Mike has said and Sally said, that's the challenge.
And, it's not just a budgetary challenge on the part of municipalities, I think, especially with public safety and crime, which is a big, a big concern here. It's, we need some legislative help in Hartford. And, I think every, you're talking with other chief elected officials all the time, and I'm sure they all share some sort of concern about better, some changes in our justice system and enforcement and.
I talked to our chief elected official colleagues of mine, I talked to police chiefs in the area. I sit on a statewide law enforcement panel, board, that two governors have appointed me to. I've been doing this for eight years now. So, and I'll just share this briefly here, that when the juvenile laws changed, and it went from 16 to 18 years old, that created a problem here. So, you're absolutely right, there's legislated laws that have to be changed, and that is what our state legislators are working on, to try to get some other language that creates more consequences to what's happening all over Connecticut.
Yeah. You know, there's, like I said, it's not just a municipal budgetary issue.
That's right.
It is a legislative issue. It could even be, you mentioned catalytic converters, it could even be a car manufacturer's issue, is, you know, where they put certain things, and don't put them, make them so easy to steal in 30 seconds or less.
We just created a regional task force that I'm part of, with all the other mayors in the area, and all the police chiefs in the area, to crack down on ATV, Bill mentioned it, street takeovers. We did a press conference in New Haven, myself, Mayor Ellicker, colleagues from all over the region, and I mentioned this before here, including police chiefs from all over the area. And, if you, hopefully, you can watch the footage one day, because Mayor Ellicker said, I'd like to introduce North Haven's Mike Frida to speak. And, I looked in the camera, and I said, I'm looking in this camera right now, ladies and gentlemen. I said, for those of you out there who are looking to come into our cities and towns, and are looking to take our streets over with your ATVs, you see this building we're in right now? You see all these confiscated ATVs that are here? That is what's going to happen. On top of that, there'll be a $1,000 fine. And, on top of that, and I looked in the camera, and I said, and we're going to be crushing these ATVs, we're going to crush them. New Haven Police Chief came up to me afterwards, and he said, that was the greatest press conference I have ever seen, in terms of anti-crime. That's what he said. So.
Well, I don't know how you guys feel, but these street takeovers, not just ATVs, but cars. I mean, we had that, what, a month ago or so, on Universal Drive, the same night they had this problem in Shelton or Milford, right?
Yes.
What is this? You know, it's frightening.
A lot of these people are from, not even from within Connecticut, they're coming from, you know, so I think that's why they're trying to monitor social media.
The coordinating social media and all.
So, we actually stopped the street takeover on Northern Washington Avenue last year, late last year, because what we're also doing is that our, our police agencies and this task force I'm on, this anti-crime task force, what we're doing also is, we're working with the FBI and the state police gathering intel. Now, on Universal Drive around Christmas time.
Right.
The intel wasn't there. But, on Northern Washington Avenue, back in probably August, we stopped it from happening because of the intel. So, there's a lot going on that we're trying to do to work around what you just mentioned, Sally, about legislative laws needing to be changed. But, so, there's a lot going on, and hopefully, what we're doing has some mitigating effect.
Well, and I'm glad to hear that there's so much going on, and that there's so much coordination going on. As Sally pointed out, I think that there's a lot that can be done and needs to be done at the legislative level, not only to hold minors accountable, perhaps their parents accountable for their actions, but also, you know, Bill was mentioning, some of the police feel hamstrung, that they can't pursue, in many cases, many of these felons, because of the legislation that really restricts what they can do.
Right.
So, I think that there's a lot that can be done, and I think it requires that our public really be not only informed, but be able to advocate. I know that Sally and I attended a legal women voters event just last weekend, in which we met with the legislators, and I personally spoke with Dave Yaccarino about this. But, I think that everyone needs to be very involved, because I think that we all love our town and we want to keep it safe.
We've had two public meetings, myself and the police chief, myself and the state legislators. We had one with 150 people, one with maybe above 100 people, and we talked exactly about what we're trying to do. We answered everybody's questions. Some questions we couldn't answer, what, because, in many, in some respects, our police officers' hands are tied.
Yes, that's my point.
So.
Yeah, the pursuit laws are, they're tough, because pursuit puts the officer's life at risk, it puts innocent bystanders at risk, but yet, it's preventing, the bad guys sometimes just are getting, getting away. It's very, it's not that simple, it's very complex.
It's a very complex issue.
And, but, but, yes, I think North Haveners are safe.
Thank you all for your things.
Even though we're talking about all these very difficult, sad situations, takeovers and ATVs and catalytic converters, you know, let's, let's see if change is on the horizon to improve piece, piece by piece. You know, you can't do everything, even you, with all your hats, you can't change it overnight.
I think, as everybody tonight said too, even with this, you know, new project, you know, we can't, you know, we can't keep shipping our trash to somebody else. And, you know, because sooner or later, there won't be anybody who'll take it. So, we have to come up with solutions here in terms of how to recycle. I try to, for years, my family and I, wife and I have tried to recycle everything. We bring it over to, you know, transfer station and, you know, but, you know, but again, it then goes somewhere else.
But, it has to go somewhere.
And, you know, and there are a lot of, and I think what we're worried about here, as everybody expressed tonight, is that, you know, the reality is not going to be the utopia that we expect, or the panacea that we expect to fix the problem. And, we have the same situation here with the controversy about going to all-electric vehicles by 2035, and whether, you know, we should or shouldn't adopt the, but it's, you know, it's.
Pros and cons.
Because of all the complications.
There are definitely pros and cons, for sure.
And, all of a sudden, it's 2024 now, we're getting off, we're only a decade away.
Right.
So, you know, it's the same thing that happened when people complained about utility rates being so high in Connecticut, it's because we gave up on generation here in Connecticut. We don't generate electricity here, basically, anymore. We're dependent on getting it elsewhere. And, you know, you end up, you end up, you know, if nobody wants to ship us electricity, you know, maybe that's where solar becomes important, and windmills and things like that, and maybe even, you know, I think there, there's a lot of concerns, legitimate concerns about nuclear power, but maybe, again, all those things are part of, you know, as well as conservation and everything else. So, all these problems are complicated. One of the things I think we do, to go back to the public safety, that I think we've done very well here in, at least our region, in our, in our, in our region here in Connecticut, is we have, we do things on a cooperative basis, like with the SWAT team and accident reconstruction. And, I mentioned earlier too, other teams supporting us when we need another fire engine. And, I know we also have to do that on occasion when other, other towns or cities need this as well.
We do.
So, I think we need to do more cooperatively, and I think Mike's been very much at the forefront in terms of, you know, building that kind of cooperation among our neighboring towns.
That's great. Okay, well, I appreciate all your opinions on this.
I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, too.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.